Ladies and gentlemen, at this time related to call for the pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a troop guy here from Great Plains School. We can have a scout come forward and give us some pledge. Come on in, identify yourself for the record. What's your name?
I'm Greg Gravito.
Greg Gravito, from troop nine. Where do you go to school?
Allstate, Craig's.
Going every day? Do your homework, clean your room? All right, why don't you take it away and give us a pledge?
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Bob Riley, please give us some prayer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Lord God, tonight, as we go about the business of working for the veteran of all Danburyans, we thank you for your wisdom and guiding light that allows us to complete our work in a most positive way. Knowing that snow is the poor man's fertilizer, we thank you, Lord, for our abundance this year. Now, Lord, as we have reached a healthy capacity, we ask that you suspend future storms, and in that light, we thank you. Lord, keep all of us safe and healthy during these hard times. Please grant special prayers to all that work so hard to ensure for our safety and protection during these winter storms. Lord, God bless all of our military personnel who go in harm's way, bring them more safely. Thank you very much.
Poor man's fertilizer, guys. First one we heard about that one, right, Mr. Tyler? I think both of us aren't going to have any hair left by the time this is all over. Oh, man. Poor man's fert— where did you get that from?
It's an old farmer's farm.
I don't know why I'm questioning a teacher yesterday. Will the clerk please call it all?
Arcanti.
Present.
Herring.
Here.
Deep Demetri. Wiley.
Here.
Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Taylor. Cola.
Here.
Nederchef. Hollis. Cabo.
Present.
Sadi. Visconti.
Here.
Trombetta.
Present.
Knapp. Nero.
Here.
Perkins. Sheenies.
Present.
Otello.
Here.
Tysholz.
Present.
Dino.
Here.
Okay. There being fourteen present and seven absent, let the record reflect the following. Ms. Nancy Deep Demetri is on vacation. She would have been here tonight, but, I mean, last Tuesday. Mr. Taylor is on family business. Mr. Megashet has a work commitment. Mr. Ha— just trying not to go too fast now. Mr. Hollis has a work commitment. Mr. Sadi is on military leave. Mr. Knapp has a work commitment, and Mr. Perkins has a work commitment as well. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. Does any member wish to address the council this evening or encourage to do so? However, you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury, and you must address this council about an item that is specifically on the agenda. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. Fox.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am Sergeant Fox. I reside the fiftyth, which would drive a Danbury, and the chairman of the Danbury Board of Education. I am here tonight to speak in favor of item number sixteen, the ad hoc committee's report on the agreement between the Board of Education and American Fire Tech. This is an agreement that's been in the works for the last over two-plus years, and is the result of a lot of hard work on the part of Board of Education personnel and city personnel to vet out the details of the contract. Once complete, or if the council were to approve, this will enable for lining upgrades and for solar power installation on several of our school buildings, which will result in savings or the life of the contractor. This will result also in some less uncertainty in terms of utility rates and some savings in our utility accounts, which are a significant portion of our budget. So with that in mind, I urge the council to approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation on item number sixteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. Carter.
I'm Dr. Ed 983 Rose. I've got a lot of fun with snow, which is my habit. I came to talk about item number sixteen. I think it's great that the city is willing to the idea of getting more energy-efficient ideas. I think it's great that they start conserving as opposed to spending. But a couple of questions about item number sixteen that have really really brought up some concerns. And I think many of them were brought up at the ad hoc, but I don't think they were sufficient to be answered. I spent an hour today and an hour yesterday re-watching and had seen a lot of the taping of the ad hoc, so at least I had some idea that I wasn't going in the wrong direction. The biggest thing that was brought up by Councilman Arcanti is the twelve percent cost that we're going to have on the 1.5 billion part of the solar energy. And what I found kind of disturbing with that was the contractor himself kept stepping back from responsibility and finite answers. It was twelve percent on whatever the bid was going to come out, which is estimated 1.5, but that didn't include any indirect fees or additional engineering that he would maybe have to delay in the field. Now, as somebody who used to run multi-million dollar construction jobs, I can tell you, you're always going to be in there redesigning and re-engineering and finding things that you didn't account for. You know, especially when you're dealing with structures old as the school is. Things that may have been done twenty years ago that nobody knew about, you may find. So that's a concern. The warranty, it kept being a question back and forth as far as the roof warranty and also the warranty for the material that was going to be provided. The warranty from the roofer, as it was stated, that would be that they were to honor their warranty as long as certain provisions were taken. We don't know what those provisions are, and how will that be affected with this, with the solar panels being on the roof? From what I understand, the solar panels are going to be free-floating on top of the roof, and I believe it's a rubber membrane roof that's up there right now. How is the loading going to come down on this? Is this thing going to be sitting on some sort of bar system or angle line, or is it coming down in legs? You know, that all changes your loading upon the roof unless you know what all the snow that we've had. This is going to be a big concern. With those loads bearing down on the rubber membrane roof, is the rubber membrane attached to, say, plywood or decking? Or is there any kind of insulation foam or any kind of boarding underneath it that will be compressed by this unit sitting on top of it? And as a result, would that then create divots where wood would get trapped underneath and wood would get dry rot and things? If that's sort of happening underneath the roof, and would that be covered and not covered in the warranty? So that, I didn't see that addressed. The idea that this is going to be held down by cinder blocks, it sounds a little bit hokey, and that's what we do with our blue tarp's when we cover things up. If we get a severe wind, and even though it's supposed to be engineered to take up a certain amount of wind load, will they still deflect? And we've had some very crazy weather. We've had higher-than-normal snowfalls, higher-than-normal wind rates. You know, as somebody who used to design and engineer steel buildings, you really can't take into everything into concern. Will these things shift? And if they shift, will it cause damage? And then again, who's on the hook for that? The contractor was pressed, would he be the general contractor? He kept stepping away from that, stepping back. He's going to be the construction management team. He's going to design the system, and he's going to put a bid package together, and then it falls on the city to take it from that point. If that's the case, is the city engineers going to have to take over for being the general contractor, so to speak? Or do we have to bring in a general contractor? Those expenses aren't there. I mean, it was very much, you know, touch-and-go, back-and-forth, and it really wasn't getting a great feeling for it. It's great that it'll take us eleven years to get back our investment, and believe me, I am all for reducing our costs and all for alternative energies, solar energy. The more we can do, the better. But could maybe the city take over as to construction management? I mean, this technology has been out for quite a while. Do we need a specialist at $180,000 with the burden falling on us to do that for us? Or are there other alternatives? It kept being brought up, should the city bid this out, as opposed to going in this direction? So I mean, to cut this short, as you know, the public will be in for it. Or at least until eight o'clock, until it's going out here. I think we need to look further into this. I think the ad hoc committee, they do a good job. They could ask a lot of questions. I was very impressed with what I saw, the questions that were being brought up. I was very impressed. But I think there are more questions that need to be asked, and I think we need to look into this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Further discussion? Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Any other members of the public? With that, we move on to our announcements. There are several events that I have highlighted for you coming up this month, in no particular order. February first was Joe Cabo's birthday. February second was Councilman Arcanti's birthday. Wow, how'd that happen? February fourteenth is Charlie Alisa Trombetta's anniversary. A couple other events that are happening as well that I just want to point out to you. February twelfth, St. Anthony Church is having their Jubilee of St. Merritt. That's at 7:00 PM at the Amber Room. That's the same night is also the Danbury Animal Welfare Society's Fourth Annual Making a Difference Ball. That's held at 6:00 PM at the Ethan Allen. On the thirteenth, Remember the Maine Ceremony, which is held at the corner of West and Main at 2:00 PM. So if the council can join us there, it would be greatly appreciated. That's usually pretty quick because it's so cold out. It's certainly going to pay tribute to our veterans. On February twentieth, it is the annual Chili Cook-Off at the Danbury Ice Arena. That goes from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. February twenty-sixth is the Twenty-Second Annual Ford Foundation Gala at the Amber Room. That's at 6:00 PM. Those are, by no means are all the events that are happening in February, but it gives you sort of a pretty good guess and idea. If you have any other questions, contact Wendy in my office. With that, Mr. Cabo, in the next place.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we read the reading in the minutes as all members have copies. The copies are in file in the legislative assist to his office.
That was made, seconded by Mr. Seaberry. I just want to point out, there was one Scribner's error that was picked up in here. It refers to the committee, the whole meeting that was held in December. This is in the minutes. And the term "resolution" was used, and it should be ordinance. So we'll be making a change, ordinance for resolution in any follow-up documentation. Other than that, any other changes, deletions, corrections, or errors? If anybody wants to point out in the minutes. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds favorably, see if they find by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Victoria, lead with the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. But prior to that, I want to take a moment to wish my mother-in-law speedy recovery and vessel's health care from a fall that she took Christmas night. And I know she's watching because I just got text message. With that, the consent calendar, February third, 2011. Received the communication, I'm sorry, number eight. Received the communication and adopt the resolution regarding real estate tax abatement for Beaver Street, a Parkinson's cooperative for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2010. The abatement will be in an amount not to exceed $11,000. Number nine, received the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Corporation Council's office to take the steps necessary to acquire the drainage easement tax assessment slot, number G14282. Number ten, received the reports from the planning commission and the city engineer and approved the request for sewer extension for proposed expansion in Blue Garage and Danbury Hospital, portion of 24 Hospital Avenue, Lot 112001. Number eleven, received the report and approved the grant easements by the city of Danbury to Plum Trees Plaza LLC. The petitioner will pay the city the sum of $23,700 for the easement in the appraised value. Number twelve, received the ad hoc committee report and approved the recommendation of the committee to allow permit coordinator to enforce the current ordinances and regulations to help the public works department. Number thirteen, received the ad hoc committee report and approved the recommendation of the committee to ask the mayor's office and public works department to explore the possibility of moving a Danbury library drop box to a location of parking lot in which patrons can drive up and return materials. And number seventeen, received the ad hoc committee report and endowed the recommendation of the committee as suggested, and that serves consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Seaberry. What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Tysholz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Moved, seconded by Councilwoman Otello. Any changes in the consent calendar as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on acceptance. All is favorably signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Or those signify by saying nay. Ayes have, and motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, promotion for the Danbury Fire Department. Dear councilmembers, I hereby submit for your confirmation the appointment and promotion of the following firefighters to the position of fire lieutenant. Firefighter John Hollis of Danbury, Connecticut. Firefighter Hollis was hired to the Danbury Fire Department on October 4, 1999. Firefighter Hollis came to the Danbury Fire Department with experience as a firefighter with the City of Stratford Fire Department. He holds bachelor of science degrees in both psychology and criminology from Southern Connecticut State University, and has many classes completed toward his associate's degree in fire technology at Norbitop Community College. Firefighter Hollis has always been active in the Danbury community, being a longtime park and recreation lifeguard and Kenosha Park supervisor. He is a 9/11 dispatcher, EMT, fire officer one, fire instructor, incident safety officer, and is qualified to operate all apparatus. He has deboots in the Danbury Fire Department, being the brother of Fire Lieutenant Joseph Hollis and the son of the late Danbury firefighter Joseph Hollis, who was killed in the line of duty.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Carter.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to promote John Hollis to the rank of lieutenant. I've known John for quite a while. I can remember him chasing his brothers and sister around the house with a hammer. I had the privilege of working with his dad, who I worked with a lot of great firemen. His father was the best fireman I ever worked with. I know how proud he'd be, not only of you, but of your two brothers and your sister, if you were still with us. John, which is safety for not only you, but for all the men that you're going to be putting in charge of. Congratulations.
Seconded by Mrs. Stanley. Any other discussion related to Mr. Hollis's promotion?
John, I just want to say that I had the pleasure of teaching Joey, John, Jessica, and Jamie, who majored in that at the high school. And so I know your family well, and just very proud of the service both you, Joey, provide to our Danbury Fire Department. You'll make an excellent lieutenant. And we had a lot of discussions about leadership and about developing your leadership skills and about how well you're doing with that. And so I know that the citizens of Danbury can count on you, this council can count on you, and certainly our residents can count on you. And I just want to thank you for accepting this promotion and congratulate you on moving up the career ladder with the best fire department in the state of Connecticut, if not the United States of America. Yeah, congratulations.
John, just so the council can look in, why don't you stand up and be recognized? Any family here with you tonight? Besides your brothers and sister firefighters sitting behind you? Thank you for being here. Congratulations again. Please, note the record reflect that Councilman Taylor, who entered the room at 8:00 PM, has concluded his family business and served the rest of the meeting. Please continue, Madam Clerk.
Second position is firefighter Robert Forbes of Woodbury, Connecticut. Firefighter Forbes was hired to the Danbury Fire Department on October 4, 1999. Firefighter Forbes came to the Danbury Fire Department with experience from Bethel and the Danbury Volunteer Fire Departments. He holds a bachelor of arts degree in fine arts from Eastern Connecticut State University, and has many classes completed toward his associate's degree in fire technology from Norbitop Community College. Firefighter Forbes has received numerous awards and letters of commendation. He is a 9/11 dispatcher, an EMT IV fire officer two, fire service instructor, and is qualified to operate all apparatus. Firefighter Forbes has deboots in the fire service with a brother, who is a lieutenant in the Horie County Fire Department in South Carolina. A father who previously held the position of deputy chief in the Norwalk, Connecticut Fire Department, and a grandfather, who was a firefighter for the city of Norwalk. It is quite evident that these highly qualified and skilled individuals will be a tremendous asset to the Danbury Fire Department and to the citizens of Danbury. I am proud and honored to submit their confirmation for promotion to the position of fire lieutenant. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Mark Lee Bowden, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Cabo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we confirm the appointment of firefighter Rob Forbes to the position of lieutenant within the Danbury Fire Department. I've had the pleasure of working with Rob for the last eleven years, and I think he's going to make great movements within the Danbury Fire Department. I'd like to congratulate him and John on their promotions tonight. Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Sheenies, who I think that was, down in the corner. Any discussion relating to the promotion of Mr. Forbes? Seeing none, then Rob, I also want to congratulate you on moving up in the career ladder here. Rob, I believe was a theater major, is that correct?
That's correct.
A theater major who ended up a firefighter. But if you read his bio, you know that it's in his blood. It's part of who he is, it's part of his family and the history that he's dedicated to the state and indeed to the residents of Connecticut. So, Rob, you scored number one on the new test. John was allowed to transfer his score in, and so you were the cream of the crop of that testing group. So I want to congratulate you first on doing that. That's not easy to do. And I also want to congratulate you on a great career so far, and certainly look forward to seeing your leaderships on display for the residents of our city, again, to work with the best fire department in the state of Connecticut. So congratulations. Do you have any family with you tonight, Rob?
Just my brothers.
Give them a round of applause. Congratulations to both of you. The official swearing-in will be Monday at 10:00 AM, Chief. Right here, and then we'll move down to the firehouse for some cake. Let's have cake after this, right? Congratulations. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Communication.
Mr. Carter. Oh, stand corrected. All those, thank you, Mr. Carter. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Forbes lieutenant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now we can go have cake in there. My apologies. Congratulations again. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Communication, cell tower, Richter Park. Dear councilmembers, I have received a letter from Richter Park General Manager Maria Zanshaw and the Richter Park Authority regarding placement of a cell tower facility on authority land. I ask for your recognition and authorization from the Richter Park Authority to inquire into the placement of such a cell tower facility.
Mr. Carter. Point of order. Let's check to make sure we voted on Mr. Hollis. Is that what you were thinking? I don't believe we did, but to be honest, we did. Yes, okay. You're sure about that, because you can seem too sure. All right. Okay, please continue. You were thinking about that all night, right? Mr. Carter, go ahead.
To inquire into the placement of such a cell tower facility at a location yet to be determined on its land. The authority voted unanimously against January 20, meaning to rescind your permission. Thank you for consideration, sincerely, Mark Lee Bowden, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Rodney.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to send item two to an ad hoc committee consisting of Corporation Council, a representative from the mayor's office, a representative from the Richter Park Authority, and a report from the planning commission.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Mr. Knapp, Mr. Colan, and Mr. Perkins. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication, request for an ad hoc off-leash dog park. Your mayor, by the members of the council. They're running here, Lisa.
What's your pleasure, counsel? The stationals, sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of Corporation Council, the Director of Planning, the Director of Parks and Rec, and the Director of Public Works.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Mrs. Tysholz. I know you're an animal owner, Mr. Knapp, and Mr. Nero. Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Invitation, request for ad hoc righteous park and other city parks.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to send this to an ad hoc and to include Corporation Council, Director of Parks and Rec, Director of Public Works, and the Chairman from the Parks and Rec Commission.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Mr. Seaberry, Mr. Dino, and Mr. Visconti. Item five has been withdrawn. Item six, please.
Communication, amendments to ordinance sewer and water and public works assessment procedure.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to ad hoc, the Corporation Council, Director of Finance, Director of Public Works, and Superintendent Public Utilities.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Mr. Cabo, Mr. Knapp, and Mr. Sadi. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Communication, certification of funds, snow slash ice removal and vehicle maintenance. With so to the attached request, I hereby certify the availability of 275,000 for snow and ice removal and vehicle maintenance. The appropriation will come from contingency account 93005852 and transferred to the accounts as listed in the attached request. The status of the contingency account is as follows. Budgeting amount, $450,000. Certification number one, registered, $26,000. This request, $275,000, giving the balance of $149,000. Please feel free to contact me to require any additional information from David St. Elia for regular finance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move to approve the appropriation of $275,000 for snow and ice removal and vehicle maintenance.
Seconded by Mr. Sheenies. Any discussion about the appropriation? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to express my appreciation as a citizen, and I'm sure I speak for every resident of Danbury, for the fine job that all city departments have been doing under the adverse conditions this year. It's, our streets have been, you know, given the conditions that have been coming along. I'd just like to say thank you to every single employee, manager, anybody involved in the work. It's, you're doing a great job, but I don't think it's over. Thank you.
Thanks for the weather report there, Mr. Taylor. Any other discussion, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I can second Officer Taylor's. Kudos to Public Works Department, Antonio, and the whole crew, and all the guys. I mean, we're getting a first-best job. You guys are really doing amazing. It's like every two days, I'm out there shoveling, and I know that you guys are out there with your trucks. And the other day, we had a, one of the properties I manage is a dead-end street, and they were pushing the snow at the end of the street. That's fine, there's really nobody down at the end. The pile has been gravitating inexorably closer and closer to the intersection. The other day, they sent a big bucket truck to pick it all up and then move it down farther to clear it out. Even when it's not snowing, they're still out there working. So we are getting our money's worth. My question tonight is, does this bring... My question tonight is, does this bring us up to date, Mayor, or does this give us a cushion going forward? Where are we with these funds?
Well, this certainly helps replenish a lot of the funds. Really, one of the challenges we have is the abuse in the equipment, sometimes even more than funding the overtime. We have about $400,000 plus this appropriation in those accounts, but we, and we're going to be using money on Saturday. And we have about six to eight more weeks coming, so, and third, thanks for potentially Thursday. So, you know, we're going to have to manage it and monitor it. We may come back for additional appropriation. You know, we always get that, see, we get that April storm, and we're ready to button everything up, so we're, it's, we're tight. It's really tight, but we, you know, this will get us through the next four or five weeks, assuming there's not a storm maybe two days.
The groundhog.
The groundhog did not see his shadow. That's correct. That means that there's six more weeks. That's because it was snowing. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on the appropriation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Item seven, motion carries unanimously. Items eight through 12 are consent. Item 13, Madam Clerk, item 14, please. Hold on. No. Mr. Cavo, you have a motion to make.
Director, at this time, I'd like to waive the reading of the report, as all members have copies, and copies are filed into the Assembly Assistant's Office.
Seconded.
Motion to make second, to waive the reading of the report, seconded by Mrs. Teichels. All in favor of waiving the reading of the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition. Okay, let's go to the main motion, and that would be Mr. Seaberry.
What do you mean?
He's up.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Would the receiver report take no action at this time?
Seconded.
Motion to make, Mr. Seaberry, seconded by Mr. Riley. Discussion related to the prior region. Mr. Sheeney.
Do I have to recuse myself before I?
Please let the record reflect that Mr. Sheeney, he has to recuse himself from voting or participating in discussion on this particular item. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Those folks from Prior Ridge that are watching tonight, you are safe and secure for the next five years. Item 15, please.
Ad hoc report transfer of state armory.
What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Cavo.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of this report, as all members have copies, and copies are filed. Do you want to say the Assistant's Office?
Let's try and have this, Mrs. Teichels, is there any objection to waiving the reading of the report? Seeing none, I wouldn't necessarily have to have a vote if somebody objects. But thank you for your silence. Okay, the report's been waived. Item 16, please. Oh, sorry. 15.
Ad hoc report transfer of state armory.
What's your pleasure, Council?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Taylor?
Um, jokingly, sorry, I apologize repeatedly. I'd like to refer this item 15 to a public hearing.
Mr. Jackson? So moved. Item 16, Madam Clerk.
Ad hoc report Board of Education, American Carrera Tech.
Mr. Cavo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the report, item number 16, Carrera Tech.
Any objection to waiving the reading of the report? Mrs. Stanley brought her glasses and everything. She's ready for her moment on TV.
I'll prepare.
All right. Seem no objection. Madam Clerk, let's go to the main item, please. Madam Clerk, let's go to the main item. Seem no objection. Item 16.
Ad hoc report Board of Education, American Carrera Tech.
Thank you. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Cavo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we received the committee's report, and we adopt the committee's recommendations to authorize the school to proceed in with the agreement of Carrera Tech for the summer empty measures.
Question's been made and seconded by Mrs. Stanley. Discussion related to this project. Mr. O'Toole.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'll be asking questions a few questions tonight, for free people, myself, and also Councilman Sade, who has got a military permit, and Councilman Perkins. And my questions concern two areas, and one is structural and one is financial. I was hoping that we could have a representative of Carrera Tech here, but they're failing in asking questions with the engineers.
Is there a question, Carrera Tech?
Okay, good. I'll put these out to the floor, and whoever wants to jump in can grab one. Perhaps the Director of Public Works of the City Engineer, perhaps the Director of Public Building, perhaps even the Director of Carrera Tech. And we'll start first with these structural issues. I went online, and I looked at the modules, and we're talking about 641 modules, I think it is, from Chillicothe, on the 210 volt units, and the website puts their weight at 38 pounds apiece. And I just did some quick math, and we came up with a figure of about 25,000 pounds for the modules themselves, including inverters, or the structural assay that these things are going to be sitting on. And my understanding is their floor are not approved, they're not rolled down through, and only anchored additionally with cement blocks. The snow load on Park Avenue right now is probably approaching 20 to 25 pounds a square foot. We've got about 16 inches of wet snow on the roof. The engineer says the rated load for that roof is 30 pounds. So we're looking at right now, and I will stipulate that this is an unusual winter, as we know, we've had the snow is a January or a month in recorded history. But we are right now approaching rated snow loads for roofs all over Connecticut, and we know that because roofs are collapsing, and that's how you tell. When roofs start falling, you know you hit that danger zone. You've got a high school in Enfield that had some damage, and this is beginning to happen even today in Danbury, which happened. So we're now looking at putting the equivalent weight of eight parked cars on the roof of Park Avenue School, just for the modules, not including the cement blocks. So my question would be to the engineers here, I know that an engineer did come out and stipulate that this would not materially affect the loads, but I don't understand how they can come to that conclusion when we are today, right now, getting close to the rated load of a roof without a solar panel. So if somebody could take that question and ask that, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Who wants to handle that question? Mr. Blazin?
We have just as background, for those that don't know, we had a failing roof at Park Avenue, and we waited several years before we could come up with the funds to repair it. We did. About a year ago, it cost us about $1.5 million. Some of that came from grant money. So we've essentially got a brand-new roof, and nothing is stronger than a roof, but still, there will be a limit to both of the capacity of it.
Mr. Blazin?
Councilman, we retained an independent structural engineer from De Stefano and Chamberlain, who came out and did an independent evaluation of Park Avenue and Ellsworth Avenue Schools. He went up into the structure to examine and measure the structural elements that support the roof and the composition, the way everything is tied together, and he made his determination based upon the calculations from what he saw, what he actually observed on site. If the structural engineer and his professional opinion looked at it, he also examined the submittals that were given to us from the Board of Education as to the solar array, and how the solar array would be placed upon the schools. And based on the information that was submitted and the calculations and the evaluation performed by the structural engineer, his report said that there was no problem installing a solar array.
So if I may be clarified, did he mean that it would not exceed the rated load of that roof, of the load that is stipulated by code? Because the code says, we spoke about this earlier.
There is definitely a code for weight loading or skull loading for the state of Connecticut. There's a, it's a building code, the International Building Code, JIBC, is what we're following in Connecticut. That stipulates how well the roof has to be manufactured and the loads that it has to hold.
And that figure is what?
I'm not sure. But in the, in the report, which I can supply you with a copy of the report, the engineer took all of this into account and said that there would be no problem adding these solar arrays that would not undermine the roof, and that this roof would bear the weight.
Was there any consideration by the committee to putting them on the ground? Perhaps some poles would be having effects. Park Avenue, several acres behind it. I mean, this face south, there's a sideline there with the sun.
With all due respect, it's not my project. I was asked to look at the project that was presented to the city from the board that was brought before Councilman Stanley's committee, and that's what I did. I didn't, I didn't offer alternatives or ask alternatives.
If I made any comment before Carrera Tech or anything else, was that ever considered?
Not at all.
Or could it be considered?
Jerry Charlotte, American Carrera Tech. The initial plan was to design the maximum size units that we could get to provide the maximum offset to the power of Park Avenue School. The, the size of the system, if you did a ground mount, would be substantially smaller, and we just didn't think it was feasible to, you know, the amount of power that could come, given the shading issues and the location issues, wouldn't make it very feasible at all.
Not enough ground area, was that the issue?
Correct. Correct.
What would happen, worst case, if the roof was damaged? I don't mean it started to leak, but if it actually started to fail, who would be liable?
Basically, the school district.
Thank you. If I can continue with some financial issues, I looked at Chillicothe's list prices for these units. They're asking $31,000, these are list prices, $31,000 for a pallet of 36 units. We're looking at 641 units, and doing some quick math, you wind up with a figure of about $550,000 just for the units. You need a couple of inverters, that are about $60,000. So between the actual items that create the electricity, we're looking at approximately $600,000, not including the mounting brackets or anything else of the labor, just the material to create the electricity. In this proposal, I'm looking at a final fee of about $1.1 million, and I'm curious as to where the extra approximately $500,000 or $600,000 is coming from. For spending $600,000 on the units themselves, why is it going to cost us another $500,000 or $600,000 to get up on the roof?
The, we put together a budget, we needed a budget to submit to the Connecticut Clean Energy Fund to review as part of their review to determine the clean energy grant that would be received. In the case of Park Avenue School, we have an estimated $60,000 or $70,000 in there as the central electrical panels will have to be replaced since they're archaic. The, those are budgetary numbers. The, in conjunction with the school district, we'll be bidding out the equipment and the installation and all of the other elements, and theoretically, it's, they could come in lower. We've specified Chico, if somebody in the bid process, if there's equivalent panels, typically the bid spec that we would help produce for the city and the school district would provide alternative, if they had an equivalent panel, equivalent racking system that had the drawings and electrical drawings, it could be substituted upon approval of the Connecticut Clean Energy Fund.
And if I'm not mistaken, Your Honor, Carrera Tech is not going to be the contract, you're just sort of the, I don't even know how to describe it, but you would actually be hiring or bidding out to a contractor who would actually do the work. And this price, I think, was your best estimate, and as you say, it could come in lower, but conceivably, it could be hired too. Is that a possibility?
We just bid out last week a similar project, school district, up, Region Four school district, and we had 10 bidders, and the bids came in substantially below the estimates, given the state of the economy. You know, we think this is a good time for the Danbury School Board to be bidding out this project.
We have, several times in the past, done energy deals with vendors, and they charge us a certain amount, but they guarantee savings down the road, and it's always been very effective for the city, or at least usually it's very effective. It may cost us a half a million dollars over 20 years, but the savings could exceed $50,000 or $60,000 per annum. That's a good thing. Spend a little money, you save a lot more. The savings that you've identified that we could conceivably enjoy at Park Avenue School are, let me just back up, but these vendors, when they, when we do these deals, guarantee these savings. They're actually guaranteed in writing the contract. Will Carrera Tech be, will Carrera Tech guarantee those savings also?
No, it's not a guaranteed performance contract.
All right, thank you. That's all I can do.
Thank you, Mr. O'Toole. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm a little concerned also on the issue of the finance. Ultimately, would you be able to project or approximate what might be the cost to the Danbury taxpayer over the next couple of years? Would ultimately, would the taxpayer be going to be picking up additional taxes over the next couple of years?
Mr. O'Toole.
Good evening. Cavan Riley. With regards to the cost to taxpayers, the proposed project, which is combined solar and lighting upgrades, and five of our facilities, will be net positive for the Board of Education. In other words, the projected savings and utilities on an annual basis will offset the cost of debt that the Board of Education will be responsible as part of this budget. So we will not be coming before the council, either before the council or the taxpayers of Danbury for further assistance in terms of paying the debt on the related projects.
I think, just as a follow-up, would there be, if by chance this project was, was not done, let's say, this year, due to the financial times that we're in, would there, let's say, three years from now, two years from now, where the economy seems to be rebounding a little bit, could it not be done at that time, too?
It could be done in the future, in the near future. However, please do understand that both projects, solar and electricity, are subsidized, or will be, will receive a subsidy from both the Connecticut Clean Energy Fund and the CLMP. On the solar project, yes, it's approximately a $1.5 million project, but we will receive approximately $740,000 of grand dollars. So we run a quick math on it, the project will cost the Board of Education and the city of Danbury approximately 50 cents on the dollar. We're in the pipeline, we have an application, we have an approved application at this time. My understanding is that pipeline no longer exists, in other words, it's closed, whether or not the state through the CCF or CLMP will offer a new route in a year, two years time. I don't know. Am I answering my question? But again, on the solar project, the local burden costs approximately 50 cents on the dollar. On the lighting upgrade, the local cost approximately 65 to 67 cents on the dollar.
And one last question. Would be, the monies that, 50 cents on the dollar, has that been placed into the, let's say, the budget this year, where we, the Board of Education is requesting something like a $4 million increase? Is that part of that?
No, as part of the superintendent's budget for the new school year, this school year, 11, 12, we have the current level of utilities, except some unknowns in terms of fuel, but in terms of electricity and the like. We have flat funded the account, superintendent's flat funded the account. So any offsets in energy savings will then be used to pay off the debt related to specific projects. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Mrs. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure if this question would go to you, Mr. Longa, but to Mr. Gucker's question about the, going forward with the project, and maybe Mr. Charlotte can also answer this. about the going forward with the project, and maybe Mr. Charlotte can also answer this. When it goes out to bid, if we find out the bids come in less, because we know solar panels, you know, a lot of things are solar, and I think the cost, you know, can come down. I think when we started this project, it was about 18 months ago, if you start to see that there's savings, who will receive the savings? Who will go to the school or will go to your company? All the savings will be, go back to the school. Correct.
That is correct.
Did I answer your question, Mr. Stanley? I want to make sure that I answered the right question, asked the right question.
Any other discussion related to this? Mr. Shinise.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two questions. One deal with the solar panels themselves. As you know, the solar industry is changing rapidly, and to avoid the same situation we had with the library a few years ago with their scanning machines, that the parts become outdated and they're not able to get the parts. Would there be in the contract to make, to ensure that the city, these parts will be available six to seven years from now, when the technology changes and these solar panels will be outdated?
The solar panels come with warranties from the manufacturer. Chico is one of the major manufacturers, has been in business 30, over 30, 40 years. It's proven technology, it's been in use. So, and the solar panels do come with warranties from the manufacturer. And in the case of, since the technology evolves, they would replace it with current technology if it wasn't available. In the case of the inverters, the Board of Education has the opportunity to buy extended warranties, base warranties on the inverter, equivalent of five years, and all of the manufacturers offer extended warranties if they so choose.
This is the second question, Your Honor.
Please proceed.
On the second one, the deal with the financing. Now, the proposal that we're, is to seek a no part of it through grants, but the second part of it, as follows the counsel, one of the family's question, is the financing is going to be 1.4 million dollars, what you're asking from the taxpayers or from this council to approve? And I just wonder what the total financing we're asking must be.
It's possibly 1.1 million dollars, I'm sure.
And is it no greater than 1.4? Because it could come less, correct?
Correct.
So if it comes in a million, you don't even finance it yet?
Absolutely.
So just to follow up, as amendment to the motions, that we could make it, the financing be no greater than 1.4 million, or up to 1.4 million. So, if we, if we do 1.4 million, we can go up and finance 1.4 million. Whether you need it or not, we should just finance 1.4 million, correct?
Correct.
So if we make the motion up to 1.4 million, that will avoid, if it comes less than a million, that's all you can do, you can't exceed that 1.1 million dollar threshold.
So you're literally, you need to. If it comes in less, we would come in over.
There's no guarantee of that. And is there a cap as well on the topic? It can't be greater than? What happens if it comes in 1.5 million?
We have a combined value of approximately 2.442, I would have a 2.5 million total project cost.
So that's 2.5?
Yes, I mean, I would recommend or suggest a cap on the total project costing 2.5 million dollars. I mean, if we put it out the bid and it comes in at 3 million dollars, we're back at the table.
And we have a motion as well? Well, I think, well, they would have to come back somehow.
I think we have a committee report on the floor right now, and motion is to adopt the committee report. You can move to adopt the recommendation of the committee, or you can amend the recommendation of the committee.
The motion, the committee report.
Okay.
So that's the motion that you have.
So that was the motion, of course, so we could amend the motion. Mr. Cowan could accept that as a friendly amendment, not to exceed the number, which not to exceed the number was 2.5 million.
And financing, 1.4 million.
So we'll accept that as a friendly amendment and.
Cap, it's 2.5.
2.5.
Okay, so Mr. Shinise offered a friendly amendment, and Mr. Cowan's motion to cap the amount at 2.5 million. If the financing comes in higher than the project. Anybody got that? Good. Any other discussion? Mr. Nero.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to try to alleviate at least on my own head, two concerns that I think I understand. One of them is, about four years ago, when I built my deck, I was building inspector there about five times, making sure that I followed the code.
Did you do that, Leo? Five times?
Actually, Leo wasn't the gentleman that showed up. And so regarding that concern, about the construction, the roof falling in, all of these other things that came up, it would appear to me, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, that we do have someone in the city who would be the watchdog on this project as it is going forward, and we're not going to be driving, I don't mean to make this sound absurd, but we're not going to be driving nails through electrical conduit and tearing up shingles and this kind of stuff. Is that somewhere in this contract, or is that just understood? That this is the case, that there is, we have watchdogs over this, we just don't say, "Go ahead and build this project," and we don't look at it again? Anybody want to answer that? I'd be just happy to hear that.
When and where applicable, all the subs will be required to pull permits. So when we, when they pull their permits, that will trigger inspections. Additionally, we will have American Carrera Tech having some oversight of the project, and the two funding sources, CLMP and the Connecticut Clean Energy Fund, will send out inspectors.
So that kind of, I think, I think what triggered that was Mr. Gucker's comment, but I'm not, I'm not sure that's exactly where it came from. And the other one is, is, that takes care of the building part of it, but then there's the project administration, or the project manager, or whatever Carrera is, would be considered. To whom? To whom do they report to? To whom do they report to, or who would be the person that is managing that part? In other words, once again, that they're, they're just not giving, yeah, go ahead, so I'm looking at that part of it now, those two parts I'm trying to separate in my head. But just to, but for the second part is, who is watching that part of it so that they're not just, let, run the bridge over.
Great. American Carrera Tech is direct report to the Board of Education. On the Board of Education side, we have a Director of Sites and Facilities, who's one of my direct reports. So I will have ultimate oversight in terms of finances and the buildings. My Director of Board, Mr. Daniel Mount-Greaves, is Director of Sites and Facilities. And we do partner with the city, with Mr. Paul Anzo and his group, Mr. Iadrolas as well. So we see this more as a partnership with the city, as we've partnered on several other projects, similar type of projects in the past. But on a day-to-day responsibility, it is, remains with the Board of Education.
Okay, so someone would be going there on a regular basis and making sure that, when they give you a schedule and they say, "This is how we're financing," would you look at that on a regular basis, kind of thing?
That is correct.
It's within your plan as you present it?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussions as it relates to this project? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds right now. All those in favor of entering in the contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Mr. Argani, Mr. Riley, and Mr. Curran, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Curran and Mr. Riley are in the negative. Item seventeen was consent. Mr. President, Department reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to. Waive the reading of the report. The report covers the order of access to the project. Waive the reading of the report as all members have copies and are on file in the emergency assistance office.
Okay, motion's been made to waive the reading of the reports, as all members have copies. Seconded by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion on department reports?
I personally would like to echo some of the comments made earlier, and thank Mr. Iadrolas and his outstanding staff of hardworking people relating to snow removal, ice control, and the frozen tundra that is Danbury right now, but he's done an outstanding, exceptional job, and I appreciate the hard work of his department. With that, all in favor accepting the reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As that motion carries unanimously. Troop nine, we're going to go into what's called the executive session, which means we've got to talk about a couple of legal matters, but I wanted to thank you for, you can hang out in one just as much, it's kind of boring, but I appreciate it more, but I wanted to thank you for your interest and wish you all the best as you pursue your Boy Scout career, and we're certainly here to help you out and achieve you to those merit numbers. God bless you. Thank you for backing us. Mr. Cowan? All right, it's time to make a motion that we move into executive session. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds right now. All those in favor of entering in the contract, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? As that motion carries unanimously. Troop nine, we're going to go into what's called the executive session, which means we've got to talk about a couple of legal matters, but I wanted to thank you for, you can hang out in one just as much, it's kind of boring, but I appreciate it more, but I wanted to thank you for your interest and wish you all the best as you pursue your Boy Scout career, and we're certainly here to help you out and achieve you to those merit numbers. God bless you. Thank you for backing us.